To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just seek motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, Chief of the agenda.
Motion by Stephanie, second to Aaron. Aaron?
Yes.
All in favor? Six oh. All right, and we will need to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I can make a motion to approve the consent agenda as.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stephanie, second to Amanda, all in favor?
I need to abstain from checks. Forty-eight, three oh two and forty-eight, three seventy-five.
Very good. All right, so all in favor, I think we had everyone's answer, so six oh. All right, so program evaluation. Looks like we're going to talk through the CSEP.
Yes. I gave you this about a week earlier than normal, I didn't hear that you on Friday to a board meeting, and I think this is a time that we've kind of talked about a lot of these things and they've kind of come up in some board meetings. Just give you a basic overview. Thank Janay for putting together a nice presentable document. It's still in draft form, there's still some things I think you probably need to cut back on a little bit on and tighten up as far as just how it looks on the page. There's as far as goals, there's a lot of guidance, it's coming from Desi right now on, this is actually an implicit requirement now. You have to have a CSEP, you have to have something that you're working on as a district. It has to make sense for your district, it doesn't have to all be the same. But they actually will give you a grade, they're going to give you feedback. So we'll probably get feedback sometime December, January. We just came from a meeting today with West Central superintendents and they're going to give some feedback about it. I have any, it was turned in in July. And one of the things that I think is important that we think about when we think about a CSEP, this is a draft. It's always in progress, we're always looking back to see, you know, there's some action steps here, there's some goals here. You know, did that work? Kind of goes that old plan, do check, act. Can you do a continuous quality improvement? And you want to have some actions, you want to say, have some ways to say, well, what's success? So these have some timelines for implementation and how we're going to monitor it and be able to say how we were successful. These are three-year goals because they're not something that you're going to be able to do tonight. There's some academic goals there dealing with, we were struggling a little bit as we're settling back into school and I think that some of our academic efforts have been, they're showing up in our state test scores. I think the reason, there's two reasons they're showing up in our state test score. One is that we are hiring a lot of people, we're shuffling a lot of people through, in some areas in our building. So there's never any time to develop that relationship. They're either going to another district and we kind of talked about this retention and keeping high-quality educators here. You keep the good people here and they grow with your kids and they get better and better and better. We're investing in the PD, we spend about twice as much as we're required by the state to spend on professional development. So, you know, we've had a big beginning teacher assistance program up here that was held here. We've got the area RPDCs coming in, it's almost like a wash, rinse, repeat that's been going on since the pandemic hit. We're trying to get highly qualified certified educators in the classroom. And to support them, and we're giving all our support, but then they're finding green and grass. So that, that's a big problem. And I feel like the board has already started to address that. And with the work that you've tasked me to do as well is to try to, you know, eliminate that number one reason, which was, I think, if my memory serves, it was about seventy-six percent of the people who were leaving were telling us it was salary-related. So we've done some things and made an investment in our educators that, that I think will have an impact on that. But there's a lot of things there that are affecting our test scores. And, you know, I think in some areas we're doing really well, other areas we want to see some improvement. So our first goal is to get us to, in every area that we're tested, to get at that proficient or advanced level at the state average or better. Because I think that's reasonable. You know, if we can get it to the state average or better, then we know we're not missing something somewhere along the way in a curriculum way. So you can see a lot of things that are, some of this we have done, some of it we need to develop more. So it's, it's like a set of action steps that all of us have kind of a piece of. Ability administrators or title directors, you have tutoring setup, after-school intervention. We have in our salary schedule to do that. And actually doing some things with parents too and allowing them to, hopefully we can develop a plan and we're just kind of in the beginning stages of talking about that of, do parents know what Missouri learning standards are? Because they can help us, they're the other side of the education equation. So, any questions on that? And I just got our math scores and we were reviewing them last week, they just kind of became available. So we got a comparison from the, from the other conference schools and we're kind of scrutinizing those right now. And we can do better, plan something, we can do better.
Do they require you to get all that information together and submit that as a report for their grade? Or are they trying to compile that all in?
You're talking about this?
Yeah, I mean, they're going to grade us on that.
Yeah, they're going to grade us, yeah.
So I didn't.
Yeah, it's already been submitted, yeah, it's already up there. Because they wanted it by July first and they moved it from October first.
Yeah.
So we continue to work on it, yeah.
I just didn't know if they had all the data they needed to grade it or if we have to submit stuff periodically through a report.
Periodically we will, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to talk about our goals and what our current plan is. They kind of are making these steps up as they go along because it's their first time through MSEP six, two guys. So, I mean, I just heard today they're going to want, I don't know, what was it? They wanted some kind of new submission in January that's going to come to us, an insurance checklist. It used to just be an insurance checklist, now it's, they actually want to see some evidence of it. And one of those things that I think they'll ask for, just keep saying that, well, they want to see it in our board agendas. So you've been seeing the strategic planning, board goals, you've been seeing the stuff about CSEP in there. So I may actually have to submit, you know, saying, yeah, we're spending some time talking about these things. You know, we're not just making it up, throwing it on a piece page and leaving it on the shelf to grow dust, so.
They told Amanda and I at the training that they want us to address those each month.
Yeah, that's something on there.
And then see what goals are being accomplished.
Yep.
And they did provide us, I think, a checklist in that board packet.
So if, we got to, we got to, you talked about the checklist to build it, yeah, we had that as well, yeah, we worked up that. But, you know, there's a lot of things here, like goal number two, so that's, that's kind of the academic. We need our learning to show up when we get to testing time. And it's not showing up the way we'd like it to. Because I think that kids are learning, I think we're kind of getting to the end of the school year and it's, it's becoming maybe not the highest focus that we want to see. So, there you go. But our principals have been working on how many different action steps and I think it is getting better. I think in some respects, because these assessments do matter. They do matter, they reflect on our work, they reflect on the kids, they reflect on the community. And we're going to have to, we're going to have to show up better on those. Okay, so, and our teachers have been working on pretty good ones as well. I mean, they're, they're, they're trying to meet the needs of kids. There's another thing that I think has affected this as well, when you talk about pandemics, it's not just kids that were sick. I think in talking with principals, and they can chime in here if you want to, of just, we seem to get more and more of students who are not coming to school regularly. And it's a constant conversation, but I'm sorry, if a kid is coming to school seventy-eight percent of the time, that's a lot to deal with, that's a lot of learning they're missing, that's a lot of, of intervention that might need to be happening. That's title services, that might be someone who has an IP, it might just be a kid that, you know, is living with grandma now and, you know, is kind of in a new environment. But that, that habit of going to go to school, I'd say after the, after the pandemic, we saw that bad. School became kind of optional for a lot of families, to kind of be, well, I don't know if I'm going to send them today. You know, so that makes our job exponentially harder. And it's a message we need parents to know, is that coming to school regularly helps them do better, helps them learn at a higher level. And, and it's, it's one of our, our challenges. Anything you guys want to say on that?
We've been talking about attendance and kind of like it's called strive for ninety-five. So today in our staff meeting, we looked at who was below ninety-five percent attendance and how can we make connections and relationships with those students, that are students you already have a relationship with. And so we went through that list and people who already had connections with certain students were signing up and saying, I'm going to check in regularly, I'm going to see what's going on, encourage them to be here. So relationships matter and that's just something we've got in the elementary that we're working on.
So we've also included like the incentives of the things that we didn't have before in the high school. Like you get to park up in the first two spots when it's raining and snowing outside. And then, then I added in some more incentives for the students who aren't drivers yet that can come up and have those type of things. So trying to reflect that this is an important piece to be there.
Yeah, I think a new cultural phenomenon, which I hadn't seen it for a while, just kind of started. Sometimes you see it in schools that aren't doing very well. They just don't have a high value of school, but I know we value school. It seemed like the pandemic created a new pattern of behavior almost, where school's optional. Kelly's not in his head, so he does want to talk about it. It's like we had a whole new thought process about whether my kids should go to school or not on a regular basis. You know, if they felt like they wanted to stay home, they stay home. You know, and you're down to eighties and seventies real fast, or less. I know Ms. Metter has done a really good job in the past few years doing an outreach with our juvenile officers and getting to know them well and having them in her office, of just seeing what kind of supports are out there. We've also built with Nancy and the other administrators, having Pharrell, you know, Behavioral Services right there, that there's something going on in that child's life where they need some counseling. And we're not privy to everything that's going on all the time, but we can help with that referral. And I was also talking to Ms. Moon about some additional opportunities to help some of these families and these kids to, to work through some of that, those mental health issues so that they can feel like they want to be at school. So I think there, there was a mental health aspect to this as well with how kids thought about school, how they felt about coming back after they've been out, in and out, quarantined and, you know, just, it was very disruptive. And there's no doubt that kids across the entire nation who, some to a lesser extent, some to a greater extent, are dealing with that thing they call learning loss. You know, it's just, and I would say even cultural loss of school. So we're still playing catch-up in a lot of areas.
We still get a phone call from time to time from a parent who says, well, we just want to do virtual school.
Yeah.
The high school used to do like the whole harmless for finals and stuff? Was attendance better then? And they had, I know it's not going to affect, like, kids who don't have their home life, it's probably not going to help them, but I was just curious.
We haven't used held harmless for seven years, six, seven, it's been six, at least six years that we haven't used that. So we could go back and look at that, that data that goes along with that.
I mean, if somebody's struggling.
Right, I mean, right.
I think it can only help you, not hurt you, I guess the way it was.
Right, that's, that's the system that was set up. But some of the feedback at the time, the removal of it, some of the feedback at the time is that our students weren't prepared to take finals once they got to the college level, where they were going to have to take the final and they were going to have to know the material and there was no held harmless at that next level. Now, that might be something to look at differently, you know, from middle school. But if you get into high school, you're wanting to prepare them for that next step and unfortunately that wasn't preparing them for that next step. It was probably helping with attendance, but it probably wasn't preparing them for the next step.
Okay, so that's the academic one, any other feedback on that? Anything that you've heard and shared, they're all good. And we, we talked about the preschool quite a bit. And I, I couldn't see us not getting credit for moving forward on that. And there are some other pieces here that still need to be done. One is just the, the measurement of it. And Nancy has worked with our kindergarten, with our person who's certified in early childhood education. You want to talk a little bit about that, kind of push them into that setting?
As far as our, the model that we're using?
Yes.
We have, Kim Scheit is certified as an early childhood special education teacher. And so she is actually graciously let us have an hour a day of her. And so she is pushing into the preschool setting an hour a day, working with the students that have IEPs over there. And then we also have contracted with a speech language pathologist from the Special Learning Center that is coming on a weekly basis and providing speech services there, so.
So the thought is that we don't end up in kindergarten and they're completely not ready to even start kindergarten. So we have a kindergarten readiness assessment now. That's to be given to all those kids to see where they are. We get credit for just giving it right now. But Ashley, do you want to speak to some of the results we've seen the last couple of years?
No, this year's been really great, I think the kindergarten teachers will say the same thing.
This one's better, yeah.
This kid's felt, I think, what Cameron knows as her, said the other day that, a kid in our class said, my uncle had COVID and somebody said, what's COVID? And she goes, oh, thank goodness, nobody, they didn't know what COVID was anymore. But the kindergarten readiness assessment we give and has to be done within the first six weeks of school. And that we changed our, we were giving a different assessment last year that was approved by the state, but it moved to their model, the KOF, and that was a great move. It was quick, easy to give and we were able to get some good information on kids coming into school if they're ready.
And I think that's a measure that we can watch those kids who actually come from our preschool and then are assessed, you have some real quantitative data to say, well, what percentage of kids are coming into kindergarten and are ready to go? And hopefully that's, that we're seeing an impact by having a preschool here, which a lot of schools have seen over the years, is that we're providing more service before they even get into ready for kindergarten. So we're putting a specialist over there, she's been talking about giving some of the people there some training as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know Nancy and I work with family today, just that partnership, even if it's not the special education aspect, just being able to support families and lean on them and call them and say, hey, we need this family to find a spot. And they're able to work with us, so the partnership has been helpful.
So that's something that I think we continue to work on in helping those kids be ready. Because I know the year prior to this, we had some very high-needs kindergarteners, isn't that right? Yeah, and so about roughly half the class were coming in. We would probably classify them as not ready for kindergarten, yeah. That's not a good trend, it's something we want to address. So that's still on there. We go to goal number three, we're talking about PBIS again, and this time moving it all the way across the district. They've changed their level, so we need to change our, they're going to tier one, tier two, tier three now, right?
No, more silver, golden, bronze, no.
No, no more of gold and, yeah, no more Olympic.
Just get a tier, I'll just get a tier.
It's tier, but I think we're still just going to call it gold, silver, bronze, I don't care. I like that better, we'll just make it up, right, match it with a tier. But we want, you know, this is a research-based practice to add PBIS, it's not something made up. It's, it's, it's out there, you can find it all over the web. To address behavior so that kids are more successful in the classroom, to put a system in place whereby you're trying to keep them in the classroom, but also address their behavior and also help the adults know, how do I address behavior? You know, that occurs on a regular basis sometimes, and how do I stem that behavior and get the kid back on task? So it's not just for kids, it's also for adults. And it's about encouraging and, and really focuses on the positive aspects of trying to affect behavior so that they're in that learning mode. So this is something a lot of districts have done, I'm very proud of the elementary and the work that they did. And they keep achieving goals, so Ms. Metter's going to follow suit and has already started some plans there with middle school, so they'll be next.
Behavior team met on, there's a group of teachers that's on a behavior team that represents over on across the board and they, we have to have certain members on that team as part of those tiers. They met during, they met at the beginning of the school, or they met at the beginning of the school year. Jolene Garber is who's leading that team for me, she's the one that I've put ahead of that, she helps manage that. They met during professional development and then they also met yesterday afternoon, after school as a part, part of that first survey pieces that we have to see of where, what we need to do and where we need to go.
And that's the good thing about doing something about PBIS, it has some support, it has your regional RPDC supporters. These are outside, outside evaluators that are coming in, giving you that feedback, training your people. Also, they actually go through the halls and talk to the kids too.
Yeah, ours is coming in tomorrow morning.
There you go.
She's coming in.
And they give the principal direct feedback, they give the teachers direct feedback. So when you can address behavior and get more kids on task, more kids are going to learn. It's, it's pretty much a no-brainer. And it's something that we implemented in my past district and I'm, I'm glad I did and I'm glad that we're, we're pulling that, that direction. Any, any questions on PBIS or anything like that? So I have a lot of data collected on that as well that we'll be able to look at as we move toward full implementation. Finally, the, this final one. Ashley and I traveled with Mike Kelly to kind of look into this with Bright Futures USA in building community partnerships, community organizations, businesses, faith-based organizations, just to build greater support and access to post-graduation opportunities, just to meet every kid's needs. If you look up Bright Futures USA, this is a framework that is used and it's not fully fleshed out. It talks about meeting every kid's need and also intertwining our community in a really focused way to have them understand more about what's happening in our school system so that they, you don't have the school system sitting here, the community's kind of here and maybe sometimes they meet, sometimes they don't. It's just like a continued enmeshment of, we know what's going on in the school, we're behind the school, may not agree with everything all the time, but we're a part of the solution as opposed to, we're part of the critics, Rhodes Gallery. We're, we're actually part of the solution. So this has gone very well in many communities and we traveled down to, what's the name of that town, Arkansas? Bentonville, I cannot remember for the life of me. And the Walton Foundation's kind of been involved in it. CJ Huff is a former colleague of mine, we actually started teaching in Bolver together. CJ Huff was the superintendent of Eldon, he was the superintendent at Joplin during the tornado. So he founded this group, Bright Futures USA, to be a key part of, of us continuing to build these relationships with the community. And there will be more coming out of this, it'll be kind of a gradual move toward this. Because we want, we want every kid who comes to Tipton to have a bright future. We want every kid's need to be met, whether it's a pair of shoes, whether they need a backpack or something happened at their house the night before and there was a fire and now they didn't close for school. If you look at Bright Futures USA for Mexico, Missouri, where I was from, we started it there and now every kid's need, they pride themselves on every kid's need being met within twenty-four hours. And it comes from the community partners that they have within the community. They have a hundred lunch buddies that actually come in, they're clear people, they come throughout their, their school system with the littles most of the time, some of the high school too. They have, it's kind of the highlight of a lot of the school officials, sorry, the outside officials, like the chief of police to the head of the fire department, to police officers too. Everybody who works in the community, being a part of that and being a lunch buddy with the kids so they can learn what it's like to sit with Dr. Robb, a third grader, so, doing that the other day. So they're, they're a riot, third herd, let me tell you. Have to talk to Ms. Pediger about them, but, no, they're a lot of fun. But that's a, a big piece of that. But it's just kind of in infancy, we're just kind of getting it going. And Mike Kelly's been really good, he's been looking for a good structure, so he was with Ashley and I as we set through that training, setting some SMART goals and setting some things in place. And this may change a little bit as we think about how we bring our community really closer together with the school district and realizing that our success is their success and their success is our success. It's just everything kind of pulls together. We have a lot of nebulous pieces that are kind of out there, you've got the football boosters and then Chamber of Commerce to do some scholarships over here and then you've got this group that wants to make a donation and it's all kind of out here. But what it does is it just kind of pulls it all together, pulls it all together, so, if that makes sense. It'll make more sense as we go through, but I encourage you to look at Bright Futures USA online and just kind of see how that structure works. What questions do you have on that one? And do you like the pictures Ms. Fisher picked for our, our plan? Because this will be a public document. Although some of our kids are graduates, you can't help it, but you're going back to last year's pictures. We want something positive out there so people know what we're working on.
I think the document looks great, personally. Do you guys see anything?
I think it looks really nice.
This is always evolving, obviously, so.
Yes, yeah. I'm going to even go back and we're going to hack on it some more and really kind of wordsmith it a little bit more. I feel like we were a little bit rushed with it because, I mean, the administrators went to some of these meetings with me and we were thinking, oh, we've gotten to October first and about four days before I left on vacation, I'm getting a call, hey, did you have your plan turned in yet? I said, yeah, you said October first. Oh, I need it by July first, and I think it was like June twenty-seventh at the point. And I was like, I've got a draft. And so I started working, started pulling together all the notes and I'm like, okay, I think I know where this is going. And then I did some more draft, working on it before I, I got to this meeting, but so far, so good. I think we've got some good focus points for the next three years and we've got some good things to monitor that'll help us.
Do you just kind of envision, and we talked about this a little bit, but including this kind of as a permanent feature of our agenda?
Yep.
This is pretty much structured.
We probably see something on strategic planning and how things are going and updates on this on a regular basis. Okay. And guys, if you think of anything or have thoughts about it, let me know. And as we kind of pull together, I'll, I'll probably send you some more information about, you know, picking your brain a little bit, like we will need different leaders, in particular for the, I've got Jason already working on some aspects of it already. Leaders that will help coordinate this stuff, not necessarily the school people, but people who are in the community that want to be a part of Bright Futures USA. One of the keys to success that happened in Mexico wasn't just because I recommended it and said, hey, we need to do this and here's a great thing for us. It was the Chamber of Commerce president stepped up and took the helm on the business side of things and said, and she harassed everybody, and she was about six foot two-one, name's Dana Keller, and Ashley met her, and she is very direct with you and she wants to get something from you, she will be on you. So it's like a, it's almost like your own, not Hitler, but like your own PR person. I mean, she was wanting to see the school and they had had a lot of problems in that district that I used to say that the community liked to chew the leg off the bulldog all the time. And, and I just couldn't figure out why, there was a lot of nice things there, there's a lot of good things that could help kids and they just didn't know what they didn't know. You know, they didn't understand what was going on in the school system, so. If you think of good leaders that could be involved in that, that would be great. Okay, so we have an amended budget, we passed one back in June with just basic numbers that we knew. And these are some of the budget highlights. Way back in June, we did prioritize when we were looking at teacher salaries. We prioritized retaining highly qualified personnel, we did a significant raise across the board, we'll go over those numbers. We did make some cuts, I want to go over those with you as a board so you're aware of those in case you've forgotten, because I know you don't work here every day. Now Bo, we might have him working here in the future, I don't know, we'll see, see if we pass them tonight. And we're still in a little bit of unknown territory regarding school funding. How, where will it all shake out? That is just like the big million-dollar question, what's going to happen with school funding? So I'm going to show you some numbers and some things that I can sit here. We're also seeing some increases, some were unexpected on what things cost, and I'll go over that too. So we did increase teacher and support staff salaries. The changes to salary schedule are approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand more this year. So we're going to spend about a quarter million dollars more. So I thought it would be closer to about four-hundred thousand, but here's what helped us. The state approved a hundred percent of the gap between teachers making below thirty-eight K. So that gap, they approved paying one-hundred percent of that, that's about a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars as well. So instead of paying like seventy percent of it, they're paying the whole thing now, does that save us a lot of money? Also, we have your teachers this year, we did cut two teachers and you probably, you might remember who they are, but I'll show them to you here in a second. So that, that made a difference. It cost us a quarter million dollars this year and it didn't cost us as much as Dr. Rob thought it would, so maybe I was being too conservative. Revenue. When we're budgeting, it's always evolving a little bit because you're getting new updates all the time on what's, what is going to get paid, what isn't going to get paid, what's the new numbers coming out, what's the economy look like, and Desi has given me an update every month. So it's ongoing, it's a year-round process, we're taking our best educated guess. So what did we cut? We cut our fax program in the teacher to tune in about 60,000 dollars total. We cut an elementary teacher for about 45, we cut the art club, we cut, cut the Moses coordinator, that was a position formerly with Joni. Uh, we cut a P, one PLTW coordinator for about 2,000. We cut the kitchen cashier for about 20,000, that's salary benefits. We cut the free and reduced lunch stipend, that was a job that Amy did graciously for us. And so now it's, it's down and Carrie, up the group does that for us. So these are some things we cut, but we kind of blended together. Budget development's been a lot more difficult. COVID has ruined our historical data on saying what's coming in from year to year. Our revenues and expenses have been skewed by past shutdowns, mitigation, new expenses, we've been living through this. We had two, uh, kids at one time that were getting 100% free and reduced meals, just like they were all free and reduced. Now we're trying to get all those forms back. Carrie and even Amy getting a little advice on how we can get those back in and Leslie, um, just trying to, because free and reduced lunch, you realize figures into how much title money we get. So that, that's a big deal. So time, kind of having that conversation with parents, no, you don't automatically apply and that's been ongoing. So our student enrollment and attendance rates have been impacted, we talked about that here just, just a minute ago. You know, kid, getting kids to come regularly, it's almost optional for many families now. Well, my kid doesn't really feel like coming, so they don't come. And I think we probably have that almost every day, unfortunately. And we're, we're saying the right things, we're trying to get them in the door, but it's still, it's a struggle. We talked about free and reduced lunch, um, that also affects our weighted average daily attendance. That goes into our figure, which you'll see here in a moment. So this is another bad thing, our expenses are increasing, we're dealing with wage inflation, we've seen that. We had schools that are already behind in pay, you know, the state of Missouri is ranking 50, is that a 50? I, I like to tell people it's by design, you don't get to the bottom without a plan. So, so I kind of think the general assembly in the state thought they'll just pay teachers as little as possible until they squawk. I actually talked to a superintendent a lot long ago, a few of them, they're talking about, where is the teachers' organization? And says, you know what, enough is enough, we're on strike. You see UAW on strike, they want a 46% increase and a four-day work, work week, supplement anybody? See what I'm saying? It's like, the whole world is just topsy-turvy. So 15 dollars an hour minimum wage for Missouri state employees, it's almost impossible to find anyone who worked for less now. That was not the case just a few years ago. And then just general inflation on fuel, it's going back up, anybody seen the gas pump lately? Energy, food, everything else. We used to talk about, well, federal government talked about temporary inflation. I think everybody knows that's not quite true. So I put in some areas that I felt like would continue to increase, I, on our operations, I increased them by about 10%. But that probably won't be enough. That's why it's in green, it may not be enough, that's an educated guess. We'll see how it goes, right? We have two new RFPs, requests for proposals that will go out this year, these are those bid requests. This is for transportation and for food. That's usually a three-year contract. And anybody want to take a guess at what that'd be, probably be less than we pay now, right? No, it's probably going to be more. So it'd be interesting to see how that comes out and I'll send it to every busing service and every food service I can, I can find and they list them on Desi and who can be approached, but I don't know what we're going to get on that. So that's for next school year. So most people understand, but there's a little formula to it and they probably don't memorize this and even I go back to make sure I got it right because I only hit it three or four times a year and then I say, oh yeah, I got that. And then I say, let me look at that one more time. So when we're talking about budgeting our revenues, what we're bringing in, local property tax, usually when people are telling you, you know, I pay for that school up there, I tell you that kind of thing. So that's the assessed valuation, that's everybody getting their bill at the end of the year. Times our tax rate, which we just passed in August. Times the historical collection rate, which is usually around 95%, that's how much property tax you're, you can expect to bring in. We don't have that money yet, just so you know, that's what's coming in. Around, we started getting it around November, December, January, February is when we start seeing that, start to roll with. We've got three counties. So it's based on our assessed valuation. The assessed valuation, that, that big number is the value of all the property and, and land and new construction, everything that's going on. If you look at for our district, there really hasn't been a lot of growth, as you can see. And what we really expected in this bottom one, this reassessment year, we're hitting at 59, a lot of superintendents were looking and saying, gosh, I hope it's at least 5% because that's the most we can get by law, by statute. Well, we didn't see much growth at all. So what does that translate to? Well, this one more thing to consider, we get the higher of the two, we could have gotten up to 6.5% growth or, sorry, lower the two, or if this was 5%, we would have gotten 5%. But we got basically point nine seven. So what that's, what that ends up being is that we go through the calculation here of assessed valuation, we put that number in, put a tax rate in for every hundred dollars assessed, we're getting 401, times the adjusted historical collection rate of 95%. You come up with about 2.2 million dollars. We have about an 8 million dollar budget, we're not there yet. So even our local tax, taxes that are coming in do not pay for all the school. Something else. So last year, we took in 2.213, this year we'll take in hopefully 2.268. That's about a potential gain around 50,000 dollars more that we'll make. We already know that's not going to cover everything that's going up, right? So that's in the local taxes. So here we go. State money or state tax money is another funding source, one of the big ones. This relies on the state adequacy target, this has been the same for the last three years. This is what they say, the state is adequate to educate a kid and they take everybody across the state and they look at that top tier of schools, maybe, they'll take out the very top, top, but then they take about the next 20 to 10, 10 to 20% of schools and they say, they're doing well, they're scoring well on the MSEP and they're spending this much. And they go through a calculation and then they come up with 6375. Well, the way they've written that and they've done that math, it's stuck now. Because old MSEP 5, everybody was doing so well on it, well, it watered it down, right? So it just kind of left it there in limbo by statute. That's the easy way to understand it. If I went through all the math, it would even confuse me, I think, at this point. Basically, they're looking at schools who are doing an adequate job educating kids and they're saying, that's about what they need, okay? That can fluctuate because then they actually have to say, well, it's 6375, so now we have to appropriate that money and actually collect the taxes to support what it's going to cost to pay for all the kids in the state of Missouri. Well, everybody knows that sometimes taxes aren't coming in, the sales tax aren't coming in, we're not collecting enough taxes. People are getting out of taxes, they're not paying them, or something's going on with the economy, a number of things. So this number may not be fully funded. For a long time, it was only about 80 or 90% of that number would be funded. So school districts would have to guess at it. So throughout the year, I'm getting an update on, we're going to pay you, we're going to pay you 6100, we're going to pay you 6200 this month, but we'll catch up. Okay, the tax revenue's coming in, but now it's, now we're going to pay you the full one, it's April. We'll kind of catch you up and we're going to give you what's left over because we actually collected that many taxes. This is kind of the way it goes. And Lisa and I are monitoring what's coming in from the state every month. And if we get a big shortfall, I start getting bad grams in the, in the email box and they're, they're telling me about it, so. ADA and WADA, weighted average daily attendance, that's where they're giving us an additional allowance for students with limited English proficiency and also with special needs students. Average daily attendance is not enrollment. So we may have 610 kids show up, but we're not getting 610 times the ADA, we'll go back to that one. So we get paid, because of the pandemic, we can go all the way back to the fourth preceding year because someone discovered there was a law in the time of the pandemic or upheaval, I can't remember how the wording was exactly, would let you go back another year. So you could look at what your WADA was, weighted average daily attendance, and you can use the highest one. This one actually plays to our favor. So right now, we'll be using this one, back from 1920, all the way back. So this one will eventually drop off and it'll get the, the current, our first or second preceding year. So we'll just have three years we can draw from. Right now, we can draw from the current, the first, second, third or fourth preceding year. If you're doing the current, you're estimating. So if we saw 50 kids move in, which we saw about 20 move in with that freshman class, it was a really big one year, I started calling Desi and saying, hey, I might want to estimate this year. Then I backed off because I was like, some of these kids might not stay and they will pay us eventually for it. I'll just monitor it. Well, it didn't end up being that big of a, of a difference, so we just stayed with it. We didn't lose any money. So here we go. Let's go back to state tax money. Because they really need to change this number right here. There's already talk to change what's the SAT, the state adequacy target, to change it up to 7100 dollars. Because that's the current, the current calculation, so it should be somewhere around 7100. That would mean about 400,000 dollars more for us per year. That's great and the state board of education's approved it, that's great. They said, this is what we recommend. Uh-oh, who are they recommending to? Ashley knows. Who are they recommending to, Ashley? The government, the state government, they're recommending it, but remember, you gotta collect the taxes and you have to appropriate the money there to say, yeah, we're going to pay it for everybody. So if it goes to 7100, that would be a boon for everybody, this is a big change, it's a big change. Will it happen? Well, this is why I pulled this up. There's a state tax money, okay? Way back here in 2007, you've got these little red lines and gray bars here, all right? This is how much money each bar shows the, um, sorry, the budget revenue fund. They get a loan from that and when the bar is positive, when a bar is negative, that indicates there's borrowing that's happening. So they didn't have enough money come in, okay? So when these two are equal, they, they, they said, we're going to bring in this much, we did, everything's good to go. But as they go across here, you can see something weird happen right over here as we get closer in time. We went from about, in Missouri, we're dealing with about a billion all the way up to 5.2 billion. So the coffers of the state are doing just fine, you got a lot of federal money coming in there. Also, you may have noticed that Missouri handled a lot of what happened during COVID like Florida did. So things kept rolling along. So that was good for our coffers, but what does it immediately make some, some lawmakers think? We've got all this money now, now we need to not fix roads. We need to cut taxes. So we start looking for ways to cut taxes because we've just got too much money. So one of the things they've done is they, and I sent you this memo, I believe, last week, was SB 190, or maybe I didn't, it's on agenda, messing that myself. So SB 190 would take, and it would say, so roughly 20% of our population might be age 62 or above. And it would say that your taxes are now frozen back to when you turn 62, if you're 62 now, it's now. If you're 82, we'll go all the way back to when you were 62 and that's the only property tax that you'll pay. It'll be frozen forever, until you die, in your primary residence. Wherever an number amen. Anybody see a problem with that? And how we're funding schools, we're trying to go back to here? We don't really know what the cost would be if we start saying all of a sudden everybody's taxes are frozen. There is a way for older folks who are disabled, who have high needs, to freeze their taxes. They have to apply, they have to go through some paperwork for it. But now they're saying everybody. They think the general assembly will work this out on some of the details and I had a conversation with Joe Lutz because your county councils that meet have an agenda like we have as a board, they can sit down and decide that they're going to go ahead and enact it like Camden County already has. They can say, we're going to start letting everybody come in and say, here's my, I, I'm 62, here's my house, this is the house I live in, this is what I pay taxes on and I want my, my property tax frozen, never raise it, stays. Without knowing what the cost will be to a district like ours, Camden County's probably doing just fine. So what will that entail for schools? Nobody really knows, but it may be a wash if we get up to here. When we get here and we're talking about raising this, very easily freezing 20% of our population that we draw from, from local property tax, freezing that amount, that could be a wash if they actually raised the SAT. It may not mean any, anything to us. It's just trading money. So it's hard to know. Does it hurt your head yet? Because it hurts my head. All right. Here we are. We got the formula money, we got the local money, that's about 5.9 million dollars. The rest of it is coming from grants, federal money and other income to make up the remainder of our revenue. So another 1.7 million dollars, we're dealing with about 7.75 million dollars for this school year. We're going to be deficit spending by about a quarter million dollars this year. This is a sheet that's sitting on your table there with you. It kind of hits the, the big numbers without having to look through that whole spreadsheet, which is the actual budget, which is also on your, on your screen. But it gives you just the big categories by object, they call, I call it categories, but looking at what we're spending on salaries, what we're spending on non-certified salaries, our health insurance and retirement, everything that's going out. We really were very lucky with health insurance this last time, I think. We had no increase at all. That was the first time in a long time for a lot of superintendents. MEA, the group we were also a part of, only went up 1% last year, so they did pretty good. I don't think it'll happen again. But this is where our budget, if you're going to slice that pie, that's what, that's the way it's being sliced right now. You can see the total of all our costs right there at the end. You see now our estimated deficit spending. This is what I estimate that our reserve will be at the end of the year. And let's just hope the general assembly comes through for us, right? That's why you as board members, it's important to advocate, call your local legislators and people who represent us and let us know, hey, we need to, we need to raise the state adequacy target. We're going to need it, we're going to need it in this economic environment for sure. What questions can I ask, answer? I asked a lot, can I answer?
I assume we have, we, I mean, I don't know who would, who would own that, probably. I'm good on that, but I assume we're having some lobbyists there at the Capitol to explain this stuff?
We do, yeah. Through Mass and Missouri Associations.
Yeah, that's how sue.
We do have one there, several, MST A has one as well, NEA is, is active, but I don't think they're active in a lot. But, you know, I go back to how strongly have teachers said what they want to say happened, you know? Teachers are nice people, we generally are as educators, we don't go on strike, we don't, we don't go march on the Capitol. But, you know, if they keep dilly-dallying around, you know, we go back. This is the kind of slide that gets me, okay? Maybe that doesn't hurt a lot right now. But what do you do? Because you saw in your narrative, if you read it, you know, we're going to run out of ESSR money this year. That's about 400,000 dollars, it's gone, that won't be in the budget next year. Something's going to have to be done this legislative session or we're going to be looking at more of these. And then that, that will be your decisions and me putting options in front of you and talking about where we're. about where we're downsizing. Because I don't know how we'll, we'll avoid going down with, you know, things like this coming up, okay? What's that going to look like? I don't know. You know? Then we have the effect on property taxes, you know? Is that gonna go through? Don't know. Because that can actually be put on the ballot. Five percent, I believe, is what they need on a petition to put it on the ballot in April. The people in our school district could vote, put that on the ballot, and all of a sudden everybody who is sixty-two eligible for Social Security could have that on the ballot, and all of a sudden, it's, it's a thing, you know? With no consideration of what the financial impact will be for our school district. So that's, I'm hoping I'm not seeing a cliff, I'll just be honest. Every superintendent will tell you the same thing I'm telling you. They're all looking at it going, what is gonna happen now? Because we're kinda coming out of this pandemic, you know, we're seeing weird things like this, you know? Is this money forever? Is it always gonna stay up here, what the state's bringing in, or is that just kind of a one-time thing and it just kinda comes down like a roller coaster? Nobody's really sure. Lot of variables, guys. But I made our budget, so it works. So we come out with a good, fun balance at the end, and we'll have some more considerations as we proceed through the year, and we may have to revisit some of this and talk about what we're doing. But that is the honest truth. As Forrest Gump said, that's all I got to say about that. Unless you have questions.
Do you have any questions?
Look on Ashley's face tells me what great news, Dr. Robb, thanks.
Looks like we're moving into administrative reports. Can you guys tell us something positive, please?
Yes, right? There we go. Okay. So I think it might have the first one on the list? Yes. So at the top of our reports, and I know Ashley has photos on hers as well, what you see there is some of the artwork that's coming out of our, with our new art teacher, Ms. Willoughby. We've got our sophomores getting their rings, which is an exciting time. I meet Friday morning with the seniors to start planning graduation, so that's a good moving forward. The last two pictures that I have shared on there, one is a young lady, and what I'm seeing this year really excites me. You might have noticed on Twitter that I have, what does learning look like? You might have seen that today with the junior high band marching down the street. I was coming out of the building, and all of a sudden I heard some drums, and I was like, what's going on there? And Mr. Maddox was marching our seventh and eighth grade around, I'm sure disrupting elementary on the one side, but marching them and teaching them what it is to march, and getting that started early, and they were huge. There was a huge number of them, and I was so excited because that's kind of been his and I goal, to grow that program. But the hands-on learning that I'm seeing in the classrooms with the science, they were making bubbles the other day, learning about cell membranes, things of that nature, it's really good. And then also, the last photo shows kind of the engagement things that we're seeing, where students are working in cooperative groups, the leadership classes, lots of great things coming from that. I tried to give you kind of an overview under academics of the things that we've been working on, and the things coming up, so that's all well. The professional development, I attached our agenda for there, from there, and then also our presentation during our professional developments for middle school and high school. We have what's called the twenty-minute lesson, where if I have seen, or Mr. Culpepper has seen, or Ms. Nancy, if she sees one as well, a great lesson that a teacher has been presenting that we've observed, that we ask them to share that out in our professional development day. So teachers get an insight to see what other strategies teachers are using. That's all good. We have our hundred percent attendance parking that's going on, and then again, what Ashley talked about earlier with the ninety-five percent attendance, have been doing some calculations. We have about eighty-nine, we have eighty-nine students in the middle school that have ninety-five percent or above attendance, and a hundred and thirty in the high school that have ninety-five percent or above attendance. So I know the numbers there are in percentages, but sometimes when you put the number with it of how many kiddos we actually have, really helps. Accomplishments, the broadcast films that I see coming to us this year are really good. They're learning and tweaking and gaining there, but I'm getting something weekly from both teachers, which, very excited about that. And then we've been giving them some projects to do that they're coming back quickly on. Kids are coming in, asking questions of like, how can we clean this up, Ms. Mutter? I actually went in there, they invited me down, because they had something really wanted to report on, and I went down with a media background that I have and said, okay, so this is why we are doing this, and this is why we aren't doing this. And they were like, oh, okay. Kinda getting their heads wrapped around that, so that was good. I got to go in and present to the seventh grade, actually teach two lessons to the seventh grade about, I had the opportunity to go see a friend that lives in Australia this summer, and so they invited me in to teach all about Australia, and I couldn't answer the questions fast enough. And that was fun to get back in the classroom a little bit. I enjoyed that. So those are lots of things going on there. I won't take all of the time, I promise, I know, guys. On the back, though, I did put some coming soon information, this is some reports and information that I'm including moving forward that I haven't in the past, so that's a new section. You're gonna see some blanks in there, because we don't have all that data yet. I just gave you a few pieces of it with the eighty-nine and the one hundred and thirty. With the academic intervention, I visited with Ms. Milton yesterday, and said, I just want the most current data that you have that you're using on academic intervention. She is seeing approximately eighty-eight kids a week for academic intervention during the day. An average of about thirty kids a day that she works with on a daily basis. Not all the same children, but a variety of whoever needs the support. Her weekly lowest number has been fifty-six, and her greatest number that she's seen during the day is a hundred and twenty in one week, that she's helped with academic supports and intervention, while she's also monitoring online classes. After-school intervention is supported by Ms. Milton, Ms. Gentzes, and Ms. Jeffcoat, and they see anywhere from two to five. We're seeing a little uptick more in the last week, because grade reporting's getting ready to come due, and so some parents have said, in there, and do that. Where you may have looked at iReady data from the elementary, we are using Evaluate, and that's not something that I've always shared with you, just for the fact that they are reports that I look at a regular basis and know how to interpret and read. But I did wanna share some that I found that might be a little more summarized, that are a little easier to interpret, is mathematics in ELA and where we are, and that we test in every area from sixth through eleventh. We test in each grade level, mathematics in ELA. The percentage numbers that are there, you, one thing that I want to help you understand on this is that this is the first month of school, and we don't expect them to know everything at that grade level in that first month of school. And that the reports do a comparison of September to November. So the state standards that are gonna be tested on in the spring are what's on the Evaluate test that we give, and those tests rotate. So whatever standards they test on in September, they also test on them in November, so we can see if there's growth, and see what they have mastered, and then what they haven't. And so the numbers you're seeing there, those are their initial numbers, which is a starting point for the first month of school. That was provided. What?
Thank you for explaining that, because I was like, whoa.
It was like, whoa, yeah, it is. That's why I said I haven't always included them, because if you don't know what they are and haven't looked at them, and then when they take the test in October, that's a, that's the, another half of what standards will be tested on in April, and state testing, and then those standards are, again, tested in December. So it's this rotating, so we're always doing that comparison. We have some support coming in that Dr. Robinson approved, an individual that you all probably heard his name, Johnny Thompson, is going to come in and work with our educators, and looking at those reports and pulling that data from what they call classroom connectors. And it shows what standards, there's actually, and I brought a report with me, and I'll pass it around here in a little bit, but it actually shows the standard, and then it shows how many students have met it, and then I can even go into that wheel as well as the teachers can, and see which students we need to address with that specific standard. So if you have eighty-six percent of the class that has mastered that standard, but you have fourteen percent that hasn't, you can go find who that fourteen percent is and do a pull-out situation of academic support and say, we're gonna work with you because you specifically, eighty-six percent of the class got it, but these fourteen percent did not get it, and so we're gonna work with them specifically to help them master those standards, to make sure we're moving forward. Evaluate is a program that I was fluent with when I was in English. It was very helpful to me. The reports to the back, I went one step further for you on the data reference. I just wanted you to see the areas in math in ELA that are being tested. And so it breaks it down. When we talk about English, I'm gonna use that one, because that's the one that I know the best. They're talking about reading skills, they're talking about speaking and listening, and writing and research. So those are the areas that are tested on the state tests, okay? And then math, you can see those as well. I'm not as familiar with those. I know those because I had those classes, and I have a college degree, and I'd take some of that stuff, but it is there. When you go to the back page as well, there's also strands, and I can break it by grade level, so you can see all the things that they're being tested on, algebra, and the one that is a green, which is arithmetic and polynomials and rational expressions. Green is good, orange, we need to work on, and red, we gotta get after it and figure it out. Blue on there is advanced, so blue is advanced, green is proficient, the orange, yellow, whichever way it looks to your eyes, that's basic, and anything red is below basic. So that's what you're looking at when you look at those grids, and it has those percentages there. Remember, though, it is the first month of school, and they're supposed to be learning those things. I did step into a classroom the other day, as kids were getting ready to take their evaluate, and I said, just remember, I want you to do your best, but remember that we don't expect you to know everything, but we do expect you to make an effort and try. Had a conversation with a student today that explained to that student that, while the football championship may be in November, my championships in April, and I really like to win. So I need them to do a good job, please, because we want our kids to do well and be successful. But I also, more importantly than winning, is making sure that they master the standards that they need at each grade level, so they're ready to move on to the next grade level.
And hopefully, you guys are noticing right away, because it's one of the action steps of the, we're starting to track what kids don't know, and try to give them the average they need. So that's an action step right there out of your C set that's going on right now.
Tied directly into it.
Yeah.
So, I know that was a lot tonight. I promise not to talk as much about it in the future unless you ask questions.
I won't either. I won't talk that much, I promise. We just finished up Quikito sales for the PTO, and they raised over fifteen thousand dollars for our kiddos. Yeah, it was a lot of Quikito we were slinging. They are going to purchase new in-ground basketball goals for the playground. Those haven't been updated for a long time, so we're gonna get new ones, that's the plan. That was a long time ago, we had those before a long time, so. That's the plan moving forward. We also finished our KOFs, which I talked about earlier, kindergarten readiness exams or screenings. Academic intervention got started this week. We had some kiddos who needed help in specific areas, and so it's really small groups, three to five kiddos with one, one teacher. The biggest thing, I think, we've taken on this last month, and since Amanda Simon's standing back there, she's gonna know what's going on, we had to do reading success plans from Synneville six eighty-one, and we started that conversation last year with Nancy, and what all had to be done. Thankfully, we had the correct assessment in place, and it was state-approved, so a lot of the pieces we're looking at, and we're reteaching, and we're working in small groups. Our title department and special ed department is working with kiddos who are behind. So we were thankful, and while it was a lot of work, it was much easier than a lot of districts are going through at this point, because we had the right pieces in place. So we got all those out. Amanda and Stacy both, Stacy Crane both met with the staff this afternoon after our meeting and went through the pieces. So parents will, I communicated the, what that looks like to parents last week in our newsletter, what they're gonna be seeing from teachers, but at parent-teacher conferences, they'll get those reading success plans if your kids need one. So that is taken care of, and we'll keep working and progress monitoring our students as they make progress on those goals. Our teachers started their letters training, their second year, the last year of letters training. We've been talking about this for two years. And it's a lot of work, but they had their first meeting in October, and they'll have three more, and then we'll finish that up. RPDC, this wasn't in there, was in the building yesterday, and they were going through classrooms. And one of the things that, since we've focused so heavily on literacy instruction the last few years, we feel like math also needs that same support. And so I asked them to specifically look at our math instruction and what are some things we need. They're gonna come back on November sixteenth and meet with my teachers during plan times and talk about planning and unpacking standards, and what that looks like, and assessments that are assessment pieces, so that's our goals, and that's the direction we're moving.
The RPDC that was in her building was also in my, my building? You're right, I had to do it. They were also in my building, but with the instruction, and we were looking at classroom management and supportive of those new educators that we have in the building, and what they can do to help them be successful and make sure that we are learning in the classroom. Then they came back today, just like they did with Ashley, to talk to our teachers and give feedback. So they were also in the building today.
My turn. Well, I'm working on the money part of things for you guys, so I'm doing my best to take advantage of any of the state and federal opportunities for us to get some additional money through, mostly it's through Medicaid. And so we are, we are recertified for the next five years, so we don't have to worry about that, we're taken care of. We are, I'm doing a lot of the, we are able to, there is a pot of money that school districts can access for therapy services. So we can, so our OT, PT, and speech-language therapists are all approved providers through Medicaid, and so we are able to direct bill any student who they see that gets Medicaid. We're able to access that pot of money for those students. And so, and it doesn't impact the students' Medicaid benefits, but it's that pot of money that we're able to access, so. And they've got a new program where we can do, where we can get excess costs, so we're in the process of getting that done right now. The thing that I would say about that is, just like after, or during COVID, they, everybody got free and reduced lunches, or everybody got free lunches, everybody got all these things. One of the things with Medicaid, and you may have heard about this, is that the state of Missouri is now recertifying families for Medicaid. And so if the families have not updated their applications, they are kicked out of Medicaid, and they have to go back and reapply and go through the whole process. So we're spending quite a bit of time working with families to get them the resources to help them reapply for Medicaid, so, just so you're aware of that. We're also able to access the High Needs Fund, so anytime we have a student that the cost is above three times what our, it's actually about thirty-six thousand dollars, anything above thirty-six thousand dollars that we're spending on one particular student, we are able to access the High Needs Fund and get a portion of that money back, so. Special ed, going great. I've got your numbers in there for the number of kids we're serving. Early childhood special ed, it is wonderful to be able to have another placement option that is in our community, and so we actually have five students that we're serving there that we probably would have been serving at the Special Learning Center. So that's a good thing. We are, on the second page, it talks about Section 504. Those are the kids who have some type of a medical disability, that it impacts some area of their life, of their life, and we are getting lots and lots and lots of referrals for this, and I said, we're currently evaluating three students. Well, that's doubled since I wrote this report. So parents are wanting their kids to get help and assistance, and so, and that's good. We want to be able to do those things. The other area that has really exploded is homelessness, and so, and the department is really putting an emphasis on homelessness right now. They're changing the requirements for the training, and so we're transitioning Jolene Garber to help with that, and so we're doing those trainings and things to get that taken care of. Anyway, and then early childhood parents as teachers. We still have our Parents as Teachers program. Bobby Sandsbury is still the person. We are working with the Montauk County Schools, so we have Latham and Clarksville in California. Bobby works at all four, and Tipton, so she works. Bobby works at all four, and Tipton, so she works on all four of the districts. So we are cooperating together to better serve our kids. And so I've listed the, the different activities that we have coming up. We are not going to be doing the Polar Express. We're gonna have Saint Nick come. So we're gonna, we're changing up the, we're changing up the, the program. And then in the spring, we're gonna have big trucks and things that go. Or are we talking about car seat safety? So that should be a fun, fun event. And then, of course, my favorite part, we have our Special Olympic football is gonna be happening on October nineteenth, if anybody wants to come and cheer. So that's what's happening in our world.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, it looks like we'll move into new business. And I think we've talked about the CSET. So we'll be seeking a motion to approve that before we do. Does anyone have, or have any discussion points about that right now?
I'll make a motion to approve the CSET plan.
All right.
Head for side.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Aaron, second. Ashley, on favor? Six oh. Okay, Dr. Rob, you wanna take this one?
Yeah. Okay, so Romy has purchased a new building and is no longer next door. Board has a couple of options, options that you'd like to proceed. If you, since we now own, it's our property. If we were still buying it, it would change things and we could not do this. But now, since we paid it off this summer, we can choose to declare it a surplus property, just like we did. If we don't wanna use it right now, we can offer it for lease and then we would take bids on it. Just, we'd open it up, we'd put it through a realtor, is what we do. It's just exactly what we did with that property down there. We're free to declare it as space for surplus and offer it for lease. Or you can tell me what you wanna do with it. If you wanna leave it dormant, can we just shut it down and mothball it? We can just leave it like that? Or do you have any other thoughts on it? So what thoughts do you have, discussion?
My opinion is put it at the lease. Nobody wants it. Use it for something. Be my opinion.
It's a nice space. I mean, it's silly to have it just sitting here.
It's frontage.
Yeah. So that would be my opinion, too, is put it up.
I agree with that, if there's nothing to school.
Do you want to do some taxes on it? Do you want that?
Some, sometime in the future, you know, if we ever got to where we had a few thousand students and, you know, the district's growing and stuff like that, your special services director might eventually, or an assistant superintendent or, you know, whatever you wanted to do with it, you know, if the district would grow. You know, you, you have that, that space. But we are, finances are now, guys, I, I'd say offer it for lease. It, every little bit helps, you know. Let the realtor decide what we wanted to lease it for and let them show it and we paid them the fee like we did the last time for that one. Go from there. It's nice to have that space that, you know, not a lot of districts have. It's common to have districts to have little things like this to do. But, you know, we saved a lot of money when we wanted to replace central office when we moved here. We could've paid six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars to replace the central office and we didn't pay like two ninety-five or whatever. And it's a used building from nineteen ninety-five and it works great. It just had an extra room on it.
I assume just obviously we'd be able to prove the lease.
Yeah, yeah, I'd come in front of you guys.
Yeah. We'd want the right tenant.
I, I think it needs to be an office space. We don't need like a little bar and grill moving in there or something like that. I think we're looking at office space. But not, probably don't want sandwich shop moving in there, Coles barbecue.
Is there anything that you guys wanna talk about before we move into motion?
I want to make one. Declare a surplus property. And offer it for lease, that's your motion, if you wanna do that. It's up to you guys.
What kind of updates does it need to have?
Looks pretty good. It's pretty clean. Romy kept it good, I don't.
There's only misses it, what they wanna do to it.
As in that?
So what does that want? Two rooms, a bathroom?
Two bathrooms. Two bathrooms. You guys wanna walk over there after the meeting if you can? Big counter space up front, you have two offices right there, a little kitchen up in the back. It's not very big. And then a couple of restrooms to the right there.
Do you, you want the motion for that?
Yeah, I don't think I can make that motion.
I'll make a motion to put our rented, what, leased out, what'd you say?
Say, declare it surplus property and offer it for lease.
So move.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Aaron. All right. Motion by Aaron, second by Ashley, on favor? Six oh. All right, talk about this one, this is weird.
Yeah, it's a weird one. You might wanna pull up the graphics on that one.
Well, I was wondering how much space we're talking about here. It doesn't look like hardening anything.
It's not much. No, it's not much.
Probably just enough to donate to the fire department, I'd say.
I think it's probably just oversight back in nineteen, whatever it was, eighty-one.
Yeah.
They closed at eighty-two. You remember man?
What?
Fortuna.
Fortuna.
Oh, just before eighty-two.
It was my dad's first year, so it'd been eighty-one, maybe.
Before I was born. I remember things from when I was seven, but not that.
There's an access road that runs east and west at the back end of the property. And I guess when they did the deed or whatever conversion, they didn't get that part in, probably.
Well, what he told me is that the railroad under at one point and then gave it to the school. Now whether that's true or not, I don't know. We're listed, so. If you would like me to see if we can just do a quick claim deed, I'm almost thinking we can declare this a surplus property, too. And see if somebody wants to buy it. If we don't do that, and everybody says, well, I would want that property, I could pull it in my garden. There, you know, there you go. Maybe not.
I say you just donate it to them.
You want me to talk to a lawyer about donating and doing a quick claim? Is that a motion?
Make a motion.
Sure.
Well, someone's gonna make the motion, second that.
I'll make a motion to donate the land in Fortuna to the Fortuna Fire Department.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
All right, on favor?
I'll get the legal stuff together on that.
You're second to that.
Will there be some legal cost, you know?
Will you guys go ahead and make a motion to declare it a surplus property, too? If the lawyer tells me I gotta do that, 'cause I'm pretty sure he's not telling me to do that. I know you're okay going in that direction, but also vote to declare the surplus property. Can you do that?
Can you do both?
You can do both, yeah. You want me to, you're voting to move to declare, to give it to them, but it may not be legal. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, we can come back next meeting and declare it a surplus property, too. Now, he's probably gonna tell me he wants you to do that, that's my guess. Believe it or it is, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. Finally.
Budget?
Budget. The final questions?
I just was gonna ask one question earlier and I forgot. You said, and I probably read it and just forgot, but you said that they approved funding the gap for the thirty-eight thousand for salaries for teachers. Is that like for one year that they have presented?
One year at a time. Yep. It is one year at a time. There's a little description of that in the, in the document I sent you, too. There's an narrative about all the stuff we're gonna do.
I thought at one time that's.
It is. It has been approved twice now, Ashley, and then they're gonna hopefully do it again. But the first time it was seventy percent, this year it's a hundred percent.
Does each school have to approve to do it or they get it automatically?
We have to submit it and we have to do the grant requirements. Lisa and I do that, you run the numbers and then we submit for it.
So you may or may not get it.
Well, we got it last year and.
Right, but I'm just saying, so coming next year, you may have to go through this all ahead and then go from there.
Yeah, it's a budget line item, is what it is. The governor has put it in his budget that they approve. So yes, the whole proof of process again, my governor, well, he may or may not put it in as a budget item. So it could go away anytime. Now, the prevailing wisdom among superintendents and the gurus that I listen to with Massa and other groups is that when, it, it'd go on for a few more years, maybe two more years until Parsons is out. And then they're going to expect us to already give it every eight thousand. So there's another variable pressure. Okay, so I think we're at thirty-three, five right now at our base. So there it is. So what will they do? And if they don't raise the SAT, state adequacy target, that needs to happen. You know, they're, they're putting these financial burdens on us, especially in a school our size. One of the, one of the pieces from the commissioner, and I just asked her straight up in a big meeting and we had a good discussion, but everybody's wondering, are they doing this to kind of push toward consolidation of schools? So looking at K8s and small schools that got fifty kids or eighty kids and saying, you know, you're in close proximity to California or Tipton or Eldon, you know, wherever you are, you should really be consolidated because you'll save money. Because it's redundancy of services. They're hiring English teachers, we're hiring English teachers. They're hiring for six kids in a classroom in Munston, we're hiring for twenty-two, you know? And there's loss, you know, in maintaining buildings and employees and everything that we have to do. They have to do the same things we do. So the requirements of schools are going up. And the salaries and the requirements are going up. So there, and a lot of superintendents thinking, they're thinking, they're not saying consolidation, but they're pushing toward con- consolidation because small districts will have a difficulty meeting all the demands of IMSA six. And also they're having to trouble meeting the salary requirements, the new salary requirements. So I don't know if that answers your question, hopefully yes.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, then we'll just take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, given the budget of twenty-three, twenty-four, so your raise proposed.
All right.
All right. All in favor? Six oh.
Hmm? Can we do this?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving to closed session immediately, calling.
Okay.
Team compliance with six one zero point two one. Did I get status two?
RSMO.
RSMO for the hall. Purpose is highlighted in bold print, one, six, thirteen. One, three. Three's not. It wasn't on his paper, but it is up here. Three, one, three, six, and three. That include Ms. Metter.
Coach Coop ever come? Yes. Okay, coach.
Do we need to add him in?
No, we don't need to add him in if he's not here.
Dr. Rob?
Yep.
Which I agree, you're free.
I'm out, too. I was gonna say.
We got a motion by Aaron, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Stephanie. All in favor? All right, Aaron?
Yes.
Ashley? Chocola?
Yes, sir.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Bo, yes. Six oh. Thank you.
Thank you.